Meeting of the North Little Rock City Council to order. Clerk Whitby, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor? Don't know. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter is absent. Harris?
Yeah.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
The four members present, sir.
Thank you. If y'all stand, I'll lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance.
God almighty, thank you for allowing us together tonight in this great hall to conduct city business and please be with us that everything that we do, say, and think will be pleasing in your sight and also pleasing in our, those residents of North Little Rock. Watch over and guide and protect all of our uniform policemen and firemen and watch over and guide and protect all of our armed forces, no matter where they are in this world, protecting us. Forgive us of our many sins. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oops, sorry, my pencil just died. Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Communications, we need to read number seven first.
Please read number seven first, Clerk.
Okay. It's a letter dated December 11th, 2017, to Ms. Diane Whitby and honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council. Dear Ms. Whitby and council members, this is to advise that unfortunately I will not be at the council meeting tonight due to illness. I'm very confident that the department heads will be able to answer any questions you may have regarding the 2018 budget proposal. Should there be any legislation on which you do not feel confident voting, please ask for it to be held. Councilmember Charlie Height will be presiding in my absence. Sincerely, Joe A. Smith, Mayor.
Thank you.
May we accept and file?
Do we need to?
And we need a second on that. A motion to accept and file, we need a second.
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 Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And then we've got six other communications. Anybody want any of those read? Or do we have a motion?
Second.
On the remaining communications, one through six, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. All right, on our agenda tonight, we have a presentation by Councilmember Ross concerning the 2017 Dogtown Derby video.
Yes, very excited. This is the third year for the Dogtown Derby, East Initiative at Lakewood Middle School, and we're very fortunate tonight, we have Kayden Jones, I don't know if Cameron Singleton. They were the two drivers of the East Initiative City Council car that we share. We share a car with them each year, and they're here with a third place trophy. But first, they have a video that we'd like to see, and it was really special this year because the race was dedicated to Chief Murphy.
All right.
So, anyway, if Mr. Billings could show that now, we'll do the presentation later.
All right. Let me see, we have it.
And Ms. Jones, and Kayden, and Cameron.
I know I saw one of the Jones boys out there in the audience.
There we go.
I wondered why he was here, so.
We would like to present our third place trophy to Ms. Debbie Ross.
Oh, okay. And I'll pass it down to all the city council on here, because this is the city council car, so. If you want to go up to the microphone so anybody can hear you, if you guys want to come over here, too.
We would just like to present this third place trophy. This is Kayden Jones and Cameron Singleton, and they drove the car this year, and we had a great time doing it, and this event would not be able to happen without our fire department, our police department, the city. You could see a lot of cars. Argenta Downtown Council supports us, Kettles Garage, there were just Barnhart Heat and Air, I could go on and on, and I know you all have a lot to do tonight, so we don't want to do that.
If you guys could face this camera, you'll be on TV for your families to see you at home.
There we go.
You want to say something really quick?
This was an amazing thing to do, and I just love how much fun it was, and it brought our community together, and how we gave out the popcorn and the dog food. It was just an amazing thing that our community had participated in, and I was very grateful to be a part of it. Kayden?
Want to say something?
No.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate your support.
Debbie, when was this? I missed it.
What?
When was this?
What date was it?
October 28th.
October 28th.
And with the permission of the city again, we will have it in October.
Number four coming up.
What?
Number four coming up in 2018.
I had no idea there was number one. But we did, and Mike, and Chief Davis, and just the police, and the fire department, the whole city just really supportive, and it does bring our community together. That was the whole point behind the project, was to support our kids first, and then bring our community together so that we would, you know, have a way to unify, support our kids, celebrate our kids, and just celebrate the city. Given to us at East Initiative at North Little Rock Middle School. Not like this.
Oh, oh.
Not that anymore. So anyway, we just want to thank y'all and present the trophy.
Anything else?
That's it. I can't talk.
What was that in Chief Davis's mouth? Was that a doughnut or a dog biscuit?
I believe that was a doughnut.
Ah.
Doughnut.
If you watch this, the presentation, I know on the screen in here, the color was not, it's not real clear, but if you watch it on TV or go back and watch it, it's beautiful.
Yeah. And that was done by my children, they made that in my classroom, and that was a doughnut and Chief Davis's, but it wasn't enough to get him down the end.
It might have slowed him down, actually, if they had done that, you know, didn't help his aerodynamics, you know.
Thank you all very much, we look forward to next year.
Anyway, thank you. Good job. Okay. All right, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so the next thing on our agenda would be citizens' public comment, and I've got three people that have signed up, and we'll go in order. Mr. Bobby Gossar.
And Mr. Gossar and the next gentleman are on legislation, and they just said they signed in just in case you needed to ask them questions.
Okay, all right. Brandon Dowd, is that correct?
And I believe he wanted to speak about the proposed electric department budget.
Okay, all right.
Did you want him to come up now, or do you want him to wait until that's called?
Well, we can do that. We can do that. Do you want to bring that up now? Which one is that?
That is R. 17 to 11.
To 11?
Mm-hmm.
All right, please call that.
So I can ask a question?
Let me go ahead and read it first. And you can't ask questions, but you can make comments. A resolution adopting a budget for the 2018 fiscal year for the North Little Rock Electric Department.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Well, I'd just like to comment, maybe I can get a reply in the future, but I heard a lot of speculation about the budget being $90 million or whatever. I don't have the data to confirm that right now, but I just want to know about moving into the third industrial revolution and a lot of breakthroughs in technology that's available to the world, like, when will there ever be a time where we move to alternative sources and potentially making homes independent power sources through solar panels and wind turbines, and kind of moving away from the traditional ways that we power our community?
Do you want to address that, or do we have anybody here that?
Mr. Bray is here.
Can offer a comment on that?
We've got it on the card.
Did you get, Mr. Bray, did you get his question?
Got the gist of it. The solar is available now to any North Little Rock customer that would like to invest in that. We have a net metering rate that would be available, that would give you credits when you do push back on the system. We also have a, the larger customers, some generation plans or programs out there that's As far as completely getting off the grid, that's going to be dependent upon what they do the next few years on battery storage. And if you can generate enough solar during the day to charge a battery and then run your appliances or whatever your needs are after dark, but I think that's going to be a few years down the road, and right now it's very expensive. Hydro, we do have a hydro facility on the river now. It's a 40-megawatt unit. We've got two 22-megawatt units each. We have one down right now for rebuild on the 28-year plan, the other one up, and is functional, and we are available right now to take everything that comes down the river as far as turning that into generation and electric power. What do you think?
I understand that...
Please step up to the microphone.
Yes, I understand that the community individuals can access it, but I was just, as from a city, like, government, like, standpoint, when will it be a time where, or from directly from the electric company, when there will be initiative to kind of like help out with decreasing the people's expenses in the community, because it's just like, expenses are greater than most income, so a lot of people potentially couldn't afford it as, from an individual's standpoint, so.
All right, right now, we have looked into city solar farms, building a two or three-megawatt unit, and then selling off the panels to individuals if they wanted to purchase them, or do a PPA on the output of the solar farm itself. We're still not quite there on pricing. It's just still not feasible for us to build a unit like that. Maybe in the next two or three years it will be, but right now it's still not practical. It's all about money.
Any other persons or council members have any questions or anything? If not, please call on the, please.
It's already been called, and there is a motion.
The question?
Excuse me.
R. 17 to 11.
Call for the vote.
Excuse me. On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now you're back to consent items.
Okay, the consent agenda. Anybody have any of those resolutions that they want to pull? I don't see any, I don't see Mr. Marlin here tonight. Is Mr. Marlin out there? No. Okay. So then, we, on the consent agenda, we do this by voice vote, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, all those in, all those in favor?
Say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Ayes have it.
New business, R. 17 to 07, Mayor Smith.
R. 17 to 07, please hold.
Hold it, okay.
R. 17 to 08.
Want me to call that one?
Please call that one.
Okay. R. 17 to 08 is a resolution appropriating funds for the purchase of property by the North Little Rock Downtown Development Board.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Ready for the vote?
Please.
On the roll, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 17 to 09, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with North Little Rock Economic Development Corporation for economic development services.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any questions? Order Councilwoman Ross.
It was really, really late one night when I was looking at this, and it says that they have to provide a quarterly report, but then it says the first report was not due until June, so I'm just curious, why are we skipping, if it's quarterly, why we don't have March? I'm looking for that right now.
What's your question?
Which section is that?
I'm looking for it. I'm in the exhibit here.
You have a question?
I was asking her which, um, okay.
See?
Okay. If you will see on page three, the first step is for the EDC to develop a marketing plan and present that to the city council by March 31st.
Okay, so that's in lieu of the group.
And so then the benchmarks would be quarterly after that time.
That's in lieu of the group. Okay, that's all I need now. One other question. What portion of this money goes to the Chamber of Commerce?
Pardon me?
What portion of this funds go to the Chamber of Commerce? Or does it all go to the economic?
That's, Mr. Larson, do you want to answer that question?
Well, nothing really directly goes to the Chamber of Commerce, but we pay rent, and then next year we're going to develop a services contract with the chamber that they'll provide certain services that would be itemized, like site, website preparation, and we have some site selection websites that are operated by Entergy and AEDC, and they're going to provide that service for us also.
Okay, so you...
And workforce, and a workforce development program we're working on right now. So it'll be, we'll get money, and then we'll contract with the chamber for the lease, and certain items will be provided with the lease, and then for certain professional services.
Okay.
Was this in the budget already? Is this added to the budget, or is this already in the budget for 2018?
Okay, the rent is in, the way the law is set up now, you have a services aspect to the contract or to the economic development effort, and then projects. The services contract that we're talking or negotiating with the chamber would be considered a project. The lease amount is in, is in the budget that you're approving tonight, hopefully approving tonight.
Okay.
And not exactly, and let me just interrupt Mr. Larson a little bit. This is for, is not for lease, this is for the economic, this agreement that is attached to the resolution is for contract with the EDC for economic development services. And then, the EDC may have certain agreements with the chamber in carrying out their functions under this contract, but it's not directly with the city, that's their business with the chamber.
Right.
Okay.
Just in the future, for your information, the way the law is set up now, that if we develop a project, it will have to be approved by city council.
Yeah, every economic development project has to go through city council and be approved, and any appropriations for it be approved by you all.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk Whitby?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 17 to 10, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution adopting a budget for the 2018 fiscal year for the city of North Little Rock.
Am I correct, are these exhibits or amendments?
Those will be amendments, but you first need a motion to print it on the floor.
Move for adoption.
Okay, you're good.
Pardon me?
Press on.
Read them.
You may want Mrs. Scott to go over those.
This is what, Chief Bradley presented these to us, but, you know.
Is there a motion to amend the new exhibit?
We haven't gotten that far yet, because there's, we need to amend in.
Yeah, we need to amend, these are amendments, correct?
Right, correct.
All right, then we, there are three of them, we need to do that separately, correct?
One of them is to exhibit A, the other two are to exhibit B. Correct.
Okay. All right.
So move.
Second. On exhibit A.
On exhibit A, okay.
Anyone have any questions? You can home the question then, as far as the amendment. Do we have any questions?
I thought I would clarify.
You want to clarify?
If you don't mind, Councilmember Height and members of the council.
Mayor, I am assuming that that friendly amendment included exhibit A, B, A and B.
Well, I guess, yeah, I'm going to ask a question. What was the amendment? What's the change?
So, late Thursday, I sent to you all the new total budget exhibit, as far, as well as a spreadsheet that outlined the changes from the version of the budget that you received at the hearing on November 11th, or, excuse me, that we reviewed at the hearing on the 11th, and then the version that is now before you with the exhibits that were amended. The difference is there were incorrect numbers in the police salaries, and then there was also a late decision made to adjust police supervisor salaries. So the total difference between the original exhibit that was filed last Tuesday and the version I sent out Thursday and then is before you tonight is $144,551, and it is only in the police budget. The only difference in the entire packet before you is in the police budget.
That we received, what, a month ago versus last week, right? Is the only difference?
Well, the difference between the version that was filed and the version for adoption tonight is $144,551, and it is all police salaries and benefits.
Okay.
Now, does that have, does that include the addition, though, we had some for the food pantries?
It also includes, correct, the $100,000 for the I-30 enhancements, the $31,000 for the audit expense that I failed to include in the first budget, the $6,600 for food pantries, $30,000 for old mill, and $7,086 for Fit to Live, and $53,815 for FOP salary adjustments.
Okay.
So those, all of those things together are $373,052, as well as I did adjust revenues slightly. I always am reviewing revenues year-to-date before we actually file the budget so that I can get the most accurate and up-to-date information, so I did adjust revenue slightly based on year-to-date actuals.
Okay. Anyone else?
Also, if I might, we do have members of the nonprofits here tonight representing the nonprofits, if there are any questions about any of those budget requests.
I saw a couple of heads out there. Okay, all right. So, do we need, we need to?
Amend.
Vote the amendment.
We need to amend this in, right?
So just for clarification, Councilmember Witcher said his motion was for A, B, and B.
A, B, and B?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And I second that.
That's correct.
So do you agree to A, B, and B?
A, B, and B.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on that?
Amendment.
Call the roll.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes, move for adoption is amended.
Second. No question?
I have questions, and Mayor Smith did say that we could hold this if we had some questions, and so I've got one question concerning the fire quota, and I haven't been able to get specific, and I wasn't able to speak to Mayor Smith today about this, and my question is, we have, right this time, we have so many slots for captains, so many slots for lieutenants, and so many slots for chief battalions, on and on and on. So, we are keeping exactly what we have this year, next year, so if, say, a battalion chief or captain, someone, they quit, they retire or something, will that slot be replaced? We will not lose that slot, is that correct?
They are in the quota ordinance, and they've been funded for the entire year of 2018.
So, say lieutenant quits or whatever, we're going to replace that with another lieutenant?
Unless the council changes the quota ordinance.
Okay, so it will stay the same? So we will be hiring then? Okay. Okay, that's all I needed on that one, that clarified that one. The Argenta Arts Foundation, is anybody here from here?
The what now?
The Argenta Arts Foundation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The Arts Foundation, okay.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to call you today either, it was crazy today.
That's okay.
Okay, on the Argenta Arts Foundation, you know...
Excuse me, I want to be sure and introduce Chris Kent, Chris will be replacing me in January as executive director for the Argenta Downtown Council and Argenta Arts Foundation, but I'm still going to be around, so.
I know.
You're going to see me, okay.
You're in Ward 1, we know where you are. Okay. The question is, you know, looking through the applications for the downtown council and the Argenta Arts Foundation. The Argenta Arts Foundation, you know, there's $20,000 in the budget for it, but the Argenta Arts Foundation pays the downtown council $3,000 a month for administration, so are you overlapping, are you duplicating services? Because at the bottom, when you tell about what you do, a lot of it's the same thing, so I'm just going to explain that.
The Argenta Downtown Council pays all the salaries, all the rent, all the overhead, but the Argenta Arts Foundation shares in those benefits of the employees and the facility and all that, so it's just an allocation of part of that expense. At one point, it was high as $7,000 a month, and now it's down to $3,000. That's primarily covered through our other revenues that we have coming in through our Friends of the Arts program, from special events that we do. The money that we get from the city, most of that is reallocated to other nonprofits to help support them. Everything from the theater to the joint to the Shakespeare Theater. We give financial support to Akanza, so if they don't come ask y'all, they just come to us and ask us, hopefully they're doing it that way, and a few others. So, we act kind of as a local arts agency for Argenta and for North Little Rock in that regard, I hope that answers.
But the city does get recognition for that, correct?
Yes.
Because I know in the past...
The city is, anything that we do, the city logo is going to be on the U-Bet, U-Bet.
I just...
We couldn't do anything we do with either one of them without the city.
Because we give the money, and you give the money, and then, okay.
Yes.
Because we give the money, and you give the money, and then, okay.
Yes.
All right, just a matter.
Absolutely.
So, so what it is, is the money that goes to the Downtown Council is the administration portion, you're doing, basically doing their work for them, is that it?
The money that goes to the Arts Foundation, from the Arts Foundation to the AEDC, is that what you're asking?
Uh-huh, yeah.
It's to help pay for the salaries for the work that we do?
Okay.
For the, for the employees, and for our, you know, a portion of our rent and that sort of thing, it's just to help cover the, cover the expenses without the Downtown Council taking the full load of all the expenses for our operations.
So, so then, why wouldn't we just give, instead of, instead of this giving $20,000, why would we just, why wouldn't we just give all the money to the Downtown Council and be done with it?
You could do that if that's-
Well, I know, but I mean, why wouldn't we?
Well, just because we like, you know, we have two separate nonprofits, we like to keep everything separate, we like to keep all our fundraising and sources for the two separated, and the expenses that are related to that, those activities as well.
And, and the, so there's the Downtown Council, and then there's?
The Argenta Arts Foundation.
And the foundation does what?
The Arts Foundation is the local arts agency, so we support other arts organizations to come to Argenta to help support them, we support, you know, like, Akanza and Arkansas, Shakespeare Theater, the Joint Act, so we provide that support to all these other nonprofits through us.
Okay.
Hopefully keeping a few folks from knocking on your door.
Say again?
I said, hopefully to keep a few folks from knocking on your door.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have another question?
No, I'm just, let's say I'm going to make Mrs. Scott happy, because I got my question answered about the fire department that I wanted to know, so I'm okay now.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Clerk Whitby?
Okay, on the-
Please, on the question.
Motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17211 was already called, R-17212, Mayor Smith?
212, please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grassiciding expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Need to convene a public hearing? You do, you need to convene a public hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, oh, we got to call a public hearing, public hearing on R-17212? Anyone here to speak for or against that? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is O-1796, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, first reading.
Moves to suspend the rules and place it on its first reading.
Second.
You meant second reading?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, second reading.
Moves to suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, third and final reading.
On the question.
We have some typos that we need to-
We discovered late this afternoon that there are two typos in this, so if you all would go to page four, section 2.12, and then in parentheses 12, it reads, "All concrete slabs shall require reinforcement in accordance with Act 332, Act should be replaced with ACI." On page five, section 4.2.2, other regulations under H, reduced pressure zone, RPX, RPX needs to be amended to say RPZ, and so if anybody would please move to amend to make those, thank you.
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
There a motion to adopt is amended?
Commissioner Spencer, I just have a quick, quick question for Mr. Spencer, if he could just kind of-
Was there a second on the motion to adopt is amended?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, and I know that I talked to you, and you explained it to me where I could understand it, as far as, you know, when it says that you can't do, the difference in maintenance and building, can you just kind of explain what you explained to me on that, that?
Your-
I'm, I'm literal, and when I read this, that you can't do anything without a permit?
The homeowner is allowed to do maintenance, so replacing a sink or toilet that's already existing, they're allowed to do, but when building a new house, putting in a sink or toilet, you would need to get a permit for that.
Okay.
So there's, there's an original inspection to make sure it's done right.
Okay, and it's really not changing anything that we're currently doing as far as-
No, that's just the way it's, we've been doing it for years.
Right, and we add fire marshal in to, on the inspections, so, okay.
On the motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1797, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance defining the application of Act 470 of 2017 to the sale or exchange of real property owned by the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Moves to suspend the rules, excuse me, moves to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No move.
Second.
Can we have Ms. Fields explain it real quick?
Sure.
This ordinance does two things, in 2017, the legislature enacted Act 470 of 2017. In doing so, they changed some of the rules as it regards the sale of real and personal property. This ordinance deals with the sale or exchange of real property and does two things, first of all, there's an inconsistency now in the statute, because it says in one paragraph that "The execution of all contracts and conveyances and lease contracts shall be performed by the mayor and city clerk or recorder when authorized by a resolution in writing and approved by a majority vote of the governing body of the municipality." However, you go on to another section, or another paragraph of the Act, and it says that the mayor may sell or exchange any municipal real estate with a value of $20,000 or less. So, since there is an inconsistency between, one paragraph says that it can be sold with the approval of the City Council, that all conveyances require approval of the City Council, and another paragraph says that the mayor can just do it, we wanted to clarify that all real estate transactions in the City of North Little Rock must be approved by the City Council. There is also a second part of this ordinance that goes hand in hand with the earlier resolution that was held, and it has to do with another provision of Act 470, which, and I'm going to read it to you all, so I get the words right, it says that municipal real estate, and this just deals with real estate, this section also deals with personal property, but our ordinance only deals with real estate, "Real estate to be disposed of as one unit shall not be sold without competitive bidding if the amount exceeds $20,000 or the maximum provided by resolution," which takes us back to the resolution that was held, but when you, it goes on in the same sentence to say, "Unless the mayor certifies in writing to the governing body of the municipality that in his or her opinion the fair market value of the lot is less than, than the amount established by ordinance." So there is some confusion with Act 470, because it refers to a resolution and an ordinance in the same sentence, which was the purpose of drafting both. As you all know, Mayor Smith is not here today, but he sponsored both the resolution and the ordinance, the city owns multiple properties within the City of North Little Rock, which it is allowed to do, and is allowed to dispose of them. If all property with a value of over $20,000 has to be bid in order to be sold, it's sold to the highest bidder regardless of who they are. The city has some interest in things like orderly development, revitalization, addressing urban blight, so that in some circumstances, you're not necessarily going to want to just, if you want to sell your property, to have to sell it to the highest bidder. The first round deal, you know, is, is I think a pretty prime example of that, and so that's why the mayor sponsored this ordinance, where the city is not required to issue competitive bids for property in value of less than $5 million, so that the city would have some flexibility with regard to the sale of real property. The other issue that, that comes into play with that is every single land transaction has to be approved by the City Council, and it is subject to, you know, it's done in public with, with notice to, to our citizens, in order that we can ensure that, that there is fair dealing when the city sells property.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have a motion to adopt?
We have a motion.
We do, are you ready?
I'm ready, are you ready?
I am. On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1798, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Oh, emergency clause.
Emergency. See, I told you, keep an eye on me. On the emergency on the previous one, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, O-1798, Mayor Smith?
O-1799, please call it.
98.
98.
You're good with 98, right?
Pardon me?
98.
It's going to be 98?
I know.
Okay. No, it's O-1798.
98?
98, yes, sir. An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements-
Oh, 98, I checked the wrong box.
That's okay. For the acquisition of scheduling and timekeeping software authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept their proposal of Nova Time, first reading.
Moves to suspend the readings, and then we have an amendment.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Move for adoption.
We have an amendment.
We can go ahead and get a second on the motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Now the amendment.
Clerk Whitby put in Dropbox this morning the contract that is referenced in the legislation. I want to thank Marie in the City Attorney's Office, who worked tirelessly last week with the vendor to get a contract that was favorable to us and acceptable to her. If I may explain what's going on here.
Please do.
In 2015, when we made the decision to, to enter into a contract with BSNA for our accounting software, we also went into an agreement with ExecuTime for timekeeping and scheduling that had an interface with BSNA, and in all of that time, we have been unsuccessful to get the vendor to provide the product that was promised as far as advanced scheduling goes. For the employees who clock in and out or have 80 hours that upload, it works just fine, but really, we really wanted to accomplish a lot of goals with our public safety departments on advanced scheduling, and not long after we went into agreement with ExecuTime, Tyler Technologies purchased that software, and we have not had any luck trying to get them to provide the application as we need it, or even tell us when they could. So BSNA pointed us to this other vendor, Nova Time, and they offered the actual maintenance annually is slightly cheaper than we're paying ExecuTime. We had a demonstration, John Barber and some folks at the Police Department have spoken to other users across the country, and we are satisfied that this product will do what we need it to do, and it does have an interface with BSNA, or we are under a bit of a crunch time, because they're offering a 30% discount if we enter into these agreements with them by Friday.
Thank you.
So what is your amendment?
That's my amendment.
Oh, that was your amendment, okay. Okay, so any discussion?
Do we have a motion?
You need a motion.
Let's do it.
Okay, to amend.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt is amended?
No move.
Second.
On the motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Second.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1799, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of power generators for the North Little Rock Fire Department appropriating $136,200 from capital and investment funds, first reading.
Move to waive all readings?
Okay.
Second.
On the motion to waive all readings, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
A move.
Second.
Can I ask what these are for?
Fire stations.
I don't know what they're for.
What now?
What are they for?
Where's the, is our fire chief out there? Who's there?
Chief Tucker's out there.
He's back there in the back.
Yes, sir. These are for generators for three of our fire stations.
For each of the fire stations?
For three of them.
For three of them.
Station four on Maumell Boulevard, station nine JFK in Osage, and station 1070 in Highway 440.
So they're in the neighborhood of $40,000 plus each, right?
Yes, sir.
Are these portable?
No, they're 60 KW diesel generators.
Okay.
Chief Tucker, how many more do we need to have all the stuff?
Give us six out of 11 stations.
Okay.
You have another question?
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion?
Yes, sir. In a second.
On the question, then.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-17100, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for repair of slip joint assembly needed for the overhaul work on Unit One at the Murray Hydroelectric Plant, first reading.
Moves to suspend all readings?
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
No second.
Discussion?
Any discussion? Nothing we do out there is cheap, is it, chief?
So no discussion on the motion to adopt? Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-17101, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a contractor's office with outdoor storage in a C4 zone for property located at 701 Judy Drive in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Suspend the readings.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-17102, Councilmember Harris?
Please call.
An ordinance granting a waiver to allow variances for an electronic changeable copy poll sign in a C3 zone for property located at 12201 Maumell Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Can I make a motion to suspend all readings, put it on third reading?
Okay. Is there a second?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Do what now?
He's made a motion to suspend the readings.
He says suspend all readings and put it on the third reading.
Well, second reading. I'm sorry.
Do you, so is your motion to suspend the reading, the first reading?
Yes.
And put it on the second reading?
Yes.
Okay. That changes what we're doing. So on the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a waiver to allow variances for an electronic changeable copy poll sign at C3 zone for property located at 12201 Maumell Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Can I make a motion, put it on third reading?
Second.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Councilman Witcher.
Okay, I have strong feelings about changeable copy signs, particularly on single poles. I like you, Mr. Harris, but I cannot vote for this.
I understand.
So you'll understand.
I understand.
Okay.
I have a question.
Can I speak?
Can I have a question?
Okay.
I'm kind of, in the, how many years we've been discussing changeable copy signs, and every time one of these comes up, there's, it seems like there's a strange circumstance or whatever involves these electronic changeable copies. What makes this one different?
This one is the location of it. It's like, it's kind of off the Boulevard, way over on the hill. As I'm talking to the owner, I'm learning about, you know, monument signs and maintenance and versus pole signs. You know, when we started out with this, it was just going to be a pole sign. And then as things move along, we're, they're, you know, they're trying to, you know, it's a budget thing, trying to get attention, trying to make profit. So, you know, electronic copies, you know, gets people's attention a little bit more. And so, you know, they've added the electronic copy to it. So, I mean, that's just, I'm trying to, you know, meet the needs of, you know, of my business leaders there, and so I sponsored this to bring it to the, you know, bring it to the, I, you know, I, I don't see it's going to be a, I don't see it to be an issue from where it sits. So, I mean, that's why I bring it, you know, to, you know, I said, look, let's bring it to the council and let's have a discussion. So, I know Mr. Murray's done some extensive studies on that, and so, anyway.
Have we already created the overlay district for this?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
We, is one? Have we, have we had any other requests for electronic changeable copy signs in that area? Have we, what's been our history out there?
We've done three or four in the last five or six years.
In that, in that general vicinity?
The electronic changeable copy signs are allowed. The issue is it's on a pole. So if they were doing-
The height of it.
Yeah. If they were to do it on a monument sign, they could do it the next day. So it's the height, and it's not a monument sign is the issue before you.
You know, looking at this from a competition standpoint of view, does, having this electronic changeable copy sign on a pole give this business an advantage over the other people, other businesses that are located out there?
The applicant's here, if you want to ask, I would guess he'd say yes, so-
There's monument signs out there, but there's no, there's no pole signs. Is that correct?
There's two or three, isn't there? There's, yeah, there are two.
But there's that envelope.
He's ready to speak on it. I mean, he can-
I'm ready to answer questions. I'm the owner of Danny Gilliland.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to come to the microphone and speak on your behalf, you're welcome to do so.
Just as, we're in business to increase sales and to make money and make profits. The more I do of that, the more the city collects in sales taxes. So the whole part of that is the more visible my business is, I'm up on a corner, they've got to turn left or turn right on Paul Hill's Boulevard or drive to get back to me, or they have to pass my business and come back in and around to get to it. So the more visible I am, the more I can attract the additional, the transactions and customers.
Sir, what was your name again?
Danny Gilliland.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any businesses adjacent to you?
Not fa, there's a Christian Brothers and a car wash. I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the name of the car wash. And then Walmart's right next door to me.
Y'all have any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman White?
It's actually the questions for Sean. Sorry. Are the other two or three copy signs in, in that area pole signs, or are they monument style?
The ones that came before you were pole signs. There's a lot more monument signs up and down the road, but two or three have come before you for it to be higher.
Right, in that area. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
If I remember correctly, those were set down lower was the justification, because when it was at the street level, then it was not necessarily a 25-foot pole that you were looking at.
Correct. When it was written, what, about 10 years ago now, the issue was you guys, or the board at that time, we were going to allow the LED signs, but they would have to be smaller and lower than a regular higher sign. So that was the trade-off, is if you were wanting to do one, it would have to be lower and smaller.
I just, you know, I'm not a fan of these signs at all because I just don't think they're very pleasing. I've had several comments lately, too, that people, they say, you sure know when you hit Maumell, because you don't have these signs. You have your monument signs throughout the city. You don't have electronic copy signs. And so, you know, that just really bothers me because they're insinuating that North Little Rock does not look nice compared to Maumell. So, I just pass along that information.
Mayor, could you tell me about the elevation in relation to your location, building location and street location, site view? Could you discuss that?
We'll pass these out. We'd like to pass these out and show you exactly the location. We'll pass them down. The elevation is quite a bit higher than the street. We're not level with the street.
Oh, so you're higher than the street. So you're higher than the street already, correct?
Correct.
Oh. I know that the ones that we've had come before us were lower than the street levels, so.
My name's David Elrod. I'm, we're the ones that sold the property with Mr. Collins, Andrew Collins, to Danny. And you just approved one at the vet clinic just down the street, across the street from the Acme Brick, that every, every building, with the exception of the ones on the north side over by the, by the Acme Brick, sit above grade, the way that building was designed. And also a little thing, too, this has over 160 feet of right-of-way. It's the widest street you have in the city of North Little Rock, with the exception of the freeway 167. It makes it difficult to see property, or see a sign when you're going 100, when you're going at 160 feet of right-of-way, and you're going 50 miles an hour. That's one thing, this is not like McCain, I'm sorry, JFK, where you have 70 feet of right-of-way, or Cam Robinson, where you have 60. This right-of-way is 160, 170 feet wide.
Any questions? So where are we, Clerk Whitby?
On the third and final reading, there's a motion and a second.
There is?
Mm-hmm. Are you ready?
Anyone have any questions?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
The motion failed. That concludes new business.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could? Yes, sir. This afternoon, a council member had questions that I couldn't answer about R-17207 and O-1797. And those two pieces of legislation are related. The city attorney did an excellent job of explaining that, so the council may want to go back and consider R-17207 if the council is satisfied. Instead of holding, you want to, you want me to call it? Council is, is, has their questions answered about it. Yes. Yes. So, Clerk Whitby, can we go back to R-17207? Please call it.
Yes, sir. A resolution defining the maximum value of real property that may be sold without competitive bidding.
Good for adoption.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. That can-
That's all.
All right. Okay, no. All right.
You have a couple of people that signed in to speak during public comment.
Public comment? We've got, I think we have three people. One of them may have already spoken, so. Now he's not, the next one, Ramona Doakes, is that, am I pronouncing that correct? Ramona Doakes?
And the gentleman that signed in does want to speak during public comment as well.
Three minutes, who does?
Let me come-
He wants to speak during public comment.
Oh, he does? Is he still here?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Doakes?
Yes, sir.
You have three minutes?
I was coming tonight to invite the five panels of the, to invite out the resident council of the electric company to a community meeting we're having on December the 19th at 6:00 PM.
Our, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ross?
That was a meeting that I was supposed to have set up, which I called the office of Acorn or ACO, and I indicated that I had contacted the mayor's office to schedule the meeting, and the mayor stated that he or the mayor's office and Neighborhood Services would schedule a meeting or will get back with you all. So right now, there's no meeting for December 19th unless the mayor's office and Neighborhood Services have set it up.
All right. Well, I think the intent was that they needed to go through the process, the application.
Your name is?
I'm Shante Pointe, sir. When will we be notified when this meeting would be? That is up to the mayor and Neighborhood Services. Now, the only contact information they have is for ACO, ACO. They have that telephone number, and, and like I said, I contacted that number. I spoke with someone there by the name of Corey, who took the message, and I also left the message on Mr. Neil Sealy's telephone, that the mayor and Neighborhood Services would be coordinating a meeting. So when they get together, they will, I'm assuming using that contact information because that's the only contact information that they have. Thank you.
And Mr. Scott is here in the, in the back of the room, if they wanted to visit with him.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I believe Mr. Dowd is, Mr. Dowd, you signed up to speak during public comment? Have you?
Sir, you signed in to speak at the end of the meeting?
You're done?
No?
Okay, I will, okay. And then the next person on the list is a familiar voice, Mr. James Arden.
I wrote a letter to Santa Claus asking, can he be here tonight? And I got a response. So if you don't mind, I'd like to share that response.
From Santa?
Yes. I want him to come up and see if y'all being good little boys and girls. And I get a response. Dear concerned citizens, as you know-
I've got this ready, Mr. Arden, okay?
Have you, do I get that extra time that you took up?
You have three minutes.
Okay. Dear concerned citizens, as you know, I'm quite busy this year getting toys, gifts, and all of the little things for all the good little boys and girls. The people you want me to come in and address are not little boys and girls. So I don't see any need of coming and addressing them to find out they've been good little boys and girls. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you soon if you've been extra good little boys and girls. Have Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Arden.
Announced.
Merry Christmas to you, too.
Announced.
You want, I, yeah. Okay, does any of the, it's easier for me to say all of our persons, but council persons, have anything they'd like to say?
Council members.
Council members, whatever, I know.
Mayor, hi. We need to remind everyone that the next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 25th, and it will be held on Wednesday, December the 27th at 6:00 PM.
Wednesday, December 27th.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. At 6:00, at 6:00 PM, correct? Same time, same location. Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Nope. And city offices will be closed Monday, December 25th and Tuesday, December 26th.
Monday and Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
In observance of Christmas.
Yes, sir.
And then they'll be closed.
We'll tell them, we'll tell them about New Year's at the next meeting, okay?
We'll wait till the next meeting, yeah. I just want to make a comment.
Councilwoman Ross?
Some of my constituents, I had two calls today from some of my constituents that are, well, I won't say, they're elderly, and they wanted me to let the sanitation department know that they really appreciate them and the assistance that the guys provide for them. So they wanted me to let sanitation know that they really appreciate them. So, chief, in case sanitation is not here, if you'll pass that word on. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion to-
Have a motion?
So move.
On the motion to adjourn, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
And Merry Christmas, everybody. Everybody.
They are not happy. I know that's, Paul told him to come to the meeting.